Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Monday, May 5, 2025. We're here this afternoon for a work session with Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources. I'm Kristin Stevens, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners, with Mayor and my fellow Commissioners, Commissioner John Kaphalas and Commissioner Jody Shattuck-McMally. We also have our County Manager, Loretta Volker, with us. And I will turn things over to Leslie Ellis, our Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources Director, to get us started on the meeting.
Welcome, everyone.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Leslie Ellis, Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources Director. It's been a few weeks since we've had one of these meetings, so we're excited to resume our regular Monday programming with you. We have a couple good items on the agenda today for discussion and updates. And the first one being information from our visitor resources, Visitor Services presentation on the work, on the great work that they did in 2024, and to do all the work that they do to keep our visitors safe and comfortable and enjoying our spaces in our natural areas. So I'll turn it over to Chris, and the team can introduce themselves and then jump into the presentation. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Leslie. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chris Fleming, Laramie County Department of Natural Resources Visitor Services Division Manager and Patrol Captain. We're here today to give you a kind of an overview of all the work that we did in 2024. And I'm going to turn it over to my amazing team here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Aubrey Hilt. I'm the Senior Ranger for the Horsetooth District.
Good afternoon. I'm Tom McLaughlin, Maintenance Supervisor for the Horsetooth District.
And we've compiled a list of some of the accomplishments that we made in 2024. So we'll get started. Before we kind of jump into the nitty-gritty, we want to cover a little bit of who we are as the Visitor Services Division. We're comprised of several full-time employees. That's what FTE stands for, as far as temporary and seasonal employees. And then we have quite a few volunteers that are part of our team as well. As far as our full-time folks, we have our Visitor Services Manager, Chris Fleming. We have three district managers, Steve Gibson, Cynthia Claggett, and Zach Cook, as well as two maintenance supervisors. The other folks on this list will kind of get into their duties and how they're involved in our team in the following slides. So as many of you are already aware, the department is responsible for the maintenance and patrol of both parks and open space properties across the county. The space spans from as far north as the Wyoming border, as far west as Estes Park, south to Berthoud, and east of the I-25 corridor. And in order to best serve this large spans of land, the department has split this space into three districts. Each of these districts is responsible for the management of both parks and open space properties. Laramie County has 15 campgrounds. Most of those campgrounds are open from April through November, but we have six of them that are open year-round. The management of these campgrounds falls heavily upon our staff of volunteer camp hosts who make daily rounds to over 430 campsites. They clean fire pits, they pick up trash, they're interacting with each and every camper in our campgrounds. In 2024, we had nearly 72,000 individual nights of camping sold among all of our campgrounds. These reservations are made possible by our administrative specialists and gatehouse attendants, who managed over 22,000 reservations and greeted almost every visitor that we have coming into the park. As far as permit sales and visitation goes, in 2024, a total of 162,000 daily permits were sold, and over 10,000 annual passes as well. This is a 3.5% reduction in sales compared to 2023. In '24, visitation remained high. We had 87 closure notices being sent out, or those capacity notices we send over text message. Eighty percent of the weekends between Memorial Day and Labor Day reached capacity in either boating, open space capacity, or both. Both sales and visitation showed a slight decrease from '23 to '24. 2.5% of that decline in pass sales is attributed to the termination of our contracts with off-site vendors. We stopped contracting with Jacks and some of the off-site folks that were helping us sell those passes. But the remaining reduction in pass sales, as well as the visitation dips, can really be directly tracked to the Alexander Mountain, Stone Canyon, and Pearl Fires, both of which affected both Carter Lake and Horsetooth Reservoir for nearly two months. Both bodies of water were closed for multiple weeks. And between July 29 and August 17, over 36% of our reservations were canceled, and we completed hundreds of additional refunds to those who weren't able to do it online. Oh, nope. Visitation remained high with, oh, shoot. Thanks. So not only did this impact revenue, it also had a fiscal impact on staff time, as our administrative specialists were working on refunding monies for several months following the closure of the parks. Considering these impacts, it's safe to speculate that had the fires not impacted our reservoir parks so deeply, our permit sales in '24 would have likely exceeded that of 2023. In addition to the woes that we had with the fires, we also had some woes with our self-serve permit machines. We call them Iron Rangers lovingly. One or more of these machines were down and unable to sell passes 38% of the year. What's more is five out of eight of the machines at the Horsetooth District, including the one at Horsetooth Mountain, were down for the entirety of the 4th of July week, so from July 1 through July 7. This is the second busiest holiday week span that we experience in the year just after Father's Day. To combat this, we reevaluated our gatehouse hours and extended them, as well as established a text-to-park option. So that's that green sign you see there on the right. Tom's team and our maintenance team went around all of our properties and installed these signs, which allow visitors to scan that QR code. It's unique to the area that they're visiting. So it allows us to gather data on the back end for visitation to specific areas, and then they can purchase a permit completely online. We plan to transition completely to this text-to-park method over the next three to four years, and hopefully get away from these Iron Rangers that seem to cause us so much strife.
All right. I'll start going over our A&amp;S program. Our Aquatic Nucents Species Program. The primary mission of this preventative program is to identify vessels that pose a high risk of introducing invasive species, primarily the zebra and quaga mussels, both but other plants and animals that exist in the Colorado bodies of water, to the spread of which would be harmful to our county waters. So the A&amp;S staff manned six boat ramps from April to November, from dusk till dawn. In 2024, our inspectors completed more than 55,000 inspections and intercepted 10 boats with, that were positive for zebra mussels, in addition to completing over 1,500 decontaminations on boats deemed to be high risks for introducing other invasive species. These numbers are lower than 2023, but for a good reason. It's due to CPW. They have a new port-of-entry inspection points, so they're stopping vessels at the state borders. Through this effort, they're catching, we're catching muscle-infested boats at the borders of the state rather than at the bodies of water. So now there's two levels of introduction, which has reduced the number, which is a really good sign.
Can I ask a question about that?
Absolutely.
So are they required to stop then, or as they enter the state, or how are they intercepting those?
Chris, do you have a better answer for that?
Just curiosity more than anything.
Theoretically, yes, they are required to stop when those are open and available, and it's a boat coming in. Depending on which of the port-of-entries, they do have enforcement, and they will go and track down and stop people who've skipped that. But not all of the port-of-entries always have that as an option. They also can't do all of the decontamination types at the port-of-entries. So it's definitely helping, but we're hoping we can continue taking steps at those port-of-entries to further decrease the threats at the local bodies of water.
Okay. Thank you.
How do folks know they're supposed to stop?
There's big signs. They use a lot of the message boards that are on the highways to let people know.
Okay. Thank you.
To continue with our A&amp;S program, in the 2024 season, there were over 1,800 vessels classified as having a high risk of introducing invasive species. 772 vessels came from other bodies of water within the state, and over 1,000 came from outside of Colorado. So what this graph here is showing is the numbers, you're going to see the numbers decrease from the high levels of inspections we saw during COVID. However, overall, the number of inspections being performed is still larger than our pre-COVID numbers. The frequency of travel between the bodies of water in the state, as well as frequency of travel between the states surrounding us, provides an increased threat to our water resources. So the continued support is essential for this preventative program to be successful. So our maintenance team is comprised of nine full-time maintenance staff, as well as two district supervisors. We take on an expanded workforce during the season, so we have expanded seasonal staff from spring, and we keep them on through our busiest months. Our maintenance staff are responsible for keeping the parks and open spaces open. They maintain, they work day and night to ensure that the campgrounds are maintained, the trailheads, the bathrooms, and all other spaces under our watch are well-maintained and safe for patrons to enjoy. We rely heavily on experience from staff. In 2024, we had Rick, one of our maintenance district supervisors, retire after 28 years of service. And then we still have Steve McCorkle on our staff, who is on his 29th year of service with the county. We rely on them for a lot of intrinsic knowledge that they can pass on to newer staff. We, the maintenance staff takes a lot of pride in what they do, and we give ourselves the title of being jacks-of-all-trades. They are continually met with new problems to solve. The maintenance team of each district has to be well-rounded and skilled laborers from everything, from welding to plumbing to electrical work, to be able to solve any kind of problems that come up in these campgrounds. In 2024, a large windstorm in April resulted in several downed trees at Horsetooth Mountain Open Space, which we had to help fall and buck up. New and more efficient firings were fabricated, new kiosks were designed and installed at the Devil's Backbone and Red Mountain Open Space, and snow is plowed from the campgrounds, as well as the road maintenance at Eagles Nest and Open Space and Red Mountain and Hermit Park. So there's a lot of different things that the maintenance team has to do. We are also responsible for our buoy programs. So over 100 buoys go in every year in April, and they come off again in November between the two reservoirs that we have, Horsetooth and Carter Lake. These take constant upkeep and maintenance, and the buoys, the buoys and their placement are essential to keeping the bodies of water safe and useful for patrons. We also have fun projects that we get to work on. So capital improvement gives us new things every year for us to maintain and build. As you can see in this slide, we removed old docks, and we got replaced with four brand-new ones. We had two at Horsetooth and two at Carter. And it was, those were much overdue. The, through our capital improvements program, two went in at Carter, two at Horsetooth. Like I said, these docks were replacing docks that were over 20 years old and in service. So it was much needed. We also had several new buildings and new projects throughout the county. In 2024, Hermit Park saw the completion of a long-awaited maintenance shop. A newly-completed and completely solar-run A&amp;S inspections, inspection station, excuse me, was installed at Satanka. And our maintenance department at Horsetooth fabricated a steel fence to go around those panels to protect them, which can be seen in the top-right corner there. And a new on-demand decon station and flush toilet was installed at the South Bay Boat Ramp. So that's that middle picture there. So that's for the A&amp;S program to be able to decon boats right there in the parking lot. And then these are just some fun facts of where the maintenance program really makes its money and earns its paychecks. On top of all the projects they have to do, there's also fun things like cleaning bathrooms and removing trash and mowing grass. So as you can see, we've put down 500 tons of road base, over 20, or almost 25,000 rolls of toilet paper bought and stocked, 182 tons of trash removed, 1,200 acres of grass mowed. And then my favorite stat is 237,500 gallons of human waste pumped from our vault toilets. So.
Thanks for the visual.
You're very welcome. Yeah, and that's some of, just some of the fun facts we have.
Questions, Commissioners at all? Go ahead, Commissioner Shattuck-McMally.
Excited about the boat docks. How is it going so far? Are they, I mean, have you got the boats out and trying them and tying them up, and how does it feel and how's it working?
Yeah, they're going great. At Horsetooth, we got them in right at the beginning of the season. No issues so far. So voters seem to like them.
Awesome. Well, well done. Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Kaphalas.
Thank you for your presentation, colleagues. Couple of questions. One is, when we have closures because we're over capacity, how does the public react to that? Do we know how the public reacts, or just accept that reality, or do they get cranky like they often do with Commissioners?
It depends. This is, this will be the start of the third year that we've been doing the text messaging. So we're seeing an increase. People can opt in to receive those text messages. We're really specific on only sending text messages out for capacity closures. So we don't, we want people to get that information and not get overwhelmed and get off of those programs. So.
It seems like it's better to get that information proactively, rather than showing up at the entrance gate and saying, "You've got to turn around."
Absolutely. And what we are seeing is changing in the usage patterns at our reservoir parks. So we've always said, "Come before 10 and after 2." And we're actually finding that we're hitting capacity earlier because people are adhering to those messaging. So they're coming, and we're often hitting capacity closer to 9:00 in the morning. But then we tend to be able to turn it over. So it's almost like two different capacity. I see that happening in the future.
Two more questions, please. Thank you. So regarding invasive species and do all of these, it was, it's interesting to know there's at least a couple of levels of checking. I wasn't aware of that. So thank you. I'm wondering, what would be the ecological impacts if our reservoirs, if some of these mussels got these zebra mussels got, these zebra mussels got in? I mean, what would be the short-term and perhaps the long-term impacts, or, or if they did get in by accident, what can we do to, to clean that up?
There's, it would be economically and ecologically devastating to the reservoirs if we, if we were to get the mussels in them. Um, they, they are highly invasive, they, they can, uh, breed very quickly. Um, if you look at some of the, the Great Lakes, um, they're a filterer, so you have beautiful, clean water, however, they attach themselves to, to the water infrastructures and filter all the food out of the water. So they're, they're essentially a water desert, um, and it costs billions of dollars to try to remedy, to either get rid of them, which they've had very little success in trying to remove them once they're in the water. And then it's a constant trying to keep up with it on the water infrastructure.
Wasn't there a big reservoir in near Pueblo or something?
Highline Reservoir.
Say that again?
Highline Reservoir, Commissioner.
That had been invaded and.
They did find, they did find them. Um, it's an, it's a more isolated body of water in a smaller reservoir, so they were able to do some sulfur treatments. Um, we'll, we'll see. They, they were able to drain the water, um, down to, to pretty low levels, as well as treat that, which would be really difficult to do in any of our reservoir parks, just because of the depth and the uses of the water. It, it would be detrimental to try to drain those lakes and try to, to use the, the methods to, to get rid of the mussels.
One last question, please. Um, and maybe this will come up in the Ranger presentation, but I'm wondering, the issues that we had a year or two ago regarding, um, Satanka Cove, you know, all kinds of activity occurring where it shouldn't be occurring, have we addressed those issues?
We've been working closely with our, um, partners at the, at state parks, with parks and wildlife.
I think they've found.
Yes, that's, that's where they're accessing, is through Lori State Park. Um, it's, it's still an incredibly popular place and it keeps, it keeps the Rangers and the maintenance team very busy during the, the months to try to keep it clean and accessible.
Okay. Thank you, colleagues.
Anything else, Commissioner? Um, yeah, Tom, I just want to thank you for reminding us all the work you do, because I, I mean, we may have had that presentation, but that's a lot of, that's a lot of different kinds of things to take care of. So in that vein, do you find it difficult for that, to find people who want to do that work or who have all those, that kind of expertise?
Uh, I would say to find the expertise would be difficult to hire. Luckily, we have a lot of in-house training that we do, that kind of, we use those, that experience we got from Rick or Steve or some of these o- other employees that have been around for a while, and we, we do a lot of, um, in-house training on ourselves to, to, to solve the problems that are very unique to our areas, yeah.
No, that's fascinating. Um, well, thank you. Thank you for all the work. Um, is it fun to, is it fun for people to, I mean, it seems like the one thing about it is you're, you're doing different things every single day, right? You're not always doing the same thing. Does that make it fun? I mean, maybe not the cleaning out the toilet, you know, the, the pumping out the toilets, but, you know.
Sure. Now, I've worked in parks for the better half of this last decade and this is definitely one of the more fun positions to be in. There's a lot of new problems to solve, uh, and it's hard to complain when you're at Horse Tooth and the problems come with a great view and a body of water. And, uh, it is definitely a, an interesting job and like you said, there's new stuff every day, something different.
Well, thank you. All right, I guess we'll move on to the Ranger program.
Excellent. Um, so as far as the Ranger cadre goes, it's consist, uh, consists of 15 fully-commissioned full-time Rangers who patrol the county's parks and open spaces 365 days a year. They also serve as supervisors to the 35 to 45 seasonal limited commission Rangers that we hire, um, starting from early April through October of each year. The Rangers work a variety of different shifts in order to provide coverage for our parks, so they're working days, nights, weekends and holidays, which is where that staff number really comes, um, and benefits us. As far as our full-time Rangers go, um, for training, they're training nearly constantly throughout the year in order to be prepared for anything that might come their way. Our fully-commissioned Rangers have a minimum number of hours that we must complete in order to satisfy the requirement for a commission set by Colorado Post Standards, um, but we're often far exceeding those hours in order to hone specialized skills, um, in areas that are specific to Laramie County parks. In addition, a lot of our full-time Rangers are also helping train and teach other officers across northern Colorado and other law enforcement agencies in these specialized areas. Our full-time Rangers completed a total of over 1,900 hours of training, um, in 2024 in the areas including low-angle rescue, uh, water survival and water rescue, crisis intervention, field training, active violence response, um, tactical medical response, as well as ICE rescue. As far as our seasonal Rangers go, um, they also receive extensive training starting on their very first day. Uh, regardless of the district, each seasonal attends a mini-skills training program, uh, all or a portion of our Boat Academy, um, as well as Ranger Excellence School. In 2024, our seasonal Ranger staff received over 5,000 hours of training and those 5,000 hours were taught virtually exclusively by our fully-commissioned Ranger cadre. Um, for those of you who are unfamiliar, uh, Ranger Excellence School is a 40-hour training that we host every year in Estes Park. Here in the school, participants receive training on officer safety, basic first aid, self-defense, and namely how to manage complex and stressful incidents as a team. The training is open to outside agencies and has been used heavily, uh, by other outside Ranger agencies across the state and even across the nation as their one and only seasonal and also full-time Ranger Academy. The school serves an average of 70 students each year, um, with nearly 1,000 students served since its inception in 2010.
Commissioner Shadak McNally?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Um, back to that other picture, I just wanted to make sure Ranger Trevor's okay with that picture.
Yes, so that is.
That's pretty realistic.
Yeah. That is a photo from one of our, our medical trainings where he, um, is acting.
He volunteered.
Yes, he volunteered and he's acting as a, a hiker who fell, um, and has a compound fracture.
And so one question I have about your training, a complex compound, um, compound fracture?
Yes.
Wow, well, pretty impressive. Um, are de-escalation techniques taught for like mental health crises? Uh, this is also part of the training, I'm just curious.
Absolutely. So our full-time folks all, um, are all CIT certified for our full-time folks, and then we teach a CIT course at Ranger Excellence School every year. And CIT is Crisis Intervention Training.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well done. Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. And while work as a Ranger includes being trained in multiple disciplines, uh, if you ask any Ranger what they like most about your job, you're guaranteed to get some sort of answer of, no two days are the same. Any given day can present new and challenging scenarios and our staff must be prepared to respond to it all. So whether it's hiking on a trail to monitor the conditions and interact with the recreating public, responding to a medical call, or completing routine maintenance, Rangers are doing it all. Another one of our duties is to patrol our open spaces and, and park properties. Um, our Rangers are patrolling by foot, bike, vehicle, as well as, uh, vessel. Across all districts on land and water, Rangers made over 43,000 contacts in 2024 and over 77% of those were involving public relations. So that's giving information about trails, answering questions about natural resources, or simply just interacting with recreators who are enjoying their time outdoors. While the overwhelming majority of these actual interactions that Rangers have with the public are geared towards providing information, less than a quarter of those interactions are in order to address some sort of regulation violation or law enforcement issue. The goal of those contacts is to change visitors' future behavior and provide them with information that allows them to make a better decision or more well-informed decision next time. Um, and so Rangers have several tools that they can use to reach this goal. Just over 1% of those contacted by Rangers in 2024 received a citation. The top reasons that we contacted folks for a law enforcement reason on land in '24 were underage possession of both alcohol and marijuana, um, consuming marijuana in a public place. Clip, third was cliff jumping or diving off the rocks. Four was fishing without a license, and the fifth most was unattended fire, which we saw an uptick in that in '24 just due to, um, the fire bans and restrictions that were put in place during the fires. Uh, the Laramie County Department of Natural Resources is also responsible for managing and patrolling four bodies of water, soon to be five. Um, Laramie County in '24 trained 27 full-time and seasonal staff in the operation of our patrol vessels in order to provide rescue and assistance, um, on 3,000 surface acres between Carter Lake and Horse Tooth Reservoir. In 2024, Rangers performed 90 water rescues on our properties, which includes both motorized vessels in distress as well as paddle crafters who are stuck in a storm and at risk of capsizing or drowning. Between Carter Lake and Horse Tooth, over 4,500 recreators were contacted to provide information, assistance or correction for law enforcement infraction, um, and about 2% of those folks contacted on the water received a citation. Uh, the top reasons for a citation on the water was no personal flotation device, um, on a child, so everyone 12 and under is required to wear a flotation device. Number two was no PFD for an adult, and three was not having your fire extinguisher onboard. Um, in 2024, the department also had the opportunity to train some Rangers in standardized field sobriety testing, um, a seated battery form of that, so they could provide that or perform those while on boats. Um, and we affected seven boating under the influence arrests in 2024. Um, our fully-commissioned staff also respond to a wider span of calls than just our seasonal staff do. Um, and in 2024, they responded to, uh, over 2,100 calls, uh, 79% of which were self-initiated, um, by our Rangers, so by proactive enforce, or proactive patrol and enforcement. Um, most of those were generated on property, um, and having to do with our rules and regulations on our properties. The most common non-vehicle-related call types were parks incidents, which are generally all of those contacts on our properties in relation to DNR rules and regulations. After that was assist to other agencies, which include all of our rescues, medicals, where we're working with other EMS, um, partners in the area. Third would be our citizen or motorist assist, which are when our Rangers provide service or help to the community for a non-enfor- law enforcement-related purpose. And finally, the last two form hive kind of go hand in hand of welfare checks and mental health calls, where Rangers are responding to assist members of the community who are in crisis, they may be attempting to harm themselves, or in their, in need of some psychological support. Our commissioned Rangers affected a total of 145 arrests in 2024, with the top reason being for driving under the influence or driving under the influence of drugs, which is what the DUID is. Um, that also includes all of those boating under the influence arrests as well. The second most common call type leading to arrests were traffic stops. It's important to note that officers, once they complete arrest, they usually change the call type to the reason for why they affected that arrest. So that traffic stops, um, is likely that those 33 calls just didn't get, um, recoded to what it was for, so it would be safe to speculate that it was either for DUI, a warrant, um, or some sort of, um, um, parks incident. The photo on the backside of the slide is from Ranger Brewer's body-warm camera footage of an arrest he affected while a male suspect had left his home in an agitated state. Um, he had driven his vehicle through several yards, caused almost $10,000 in property damage and nearly hit several pedestrians and bicyclists while he was weaving in and out of oncoming traffic on Overland Trail. The suspect made his way up to Horse Tooth Reservoir and attempted to elude Ranger Brewer, and he crashed his vehicle several times into another witness vehicle. Um, Ranger Brewer pursued the suspect, who became uncooperative and began crawling under his vehicle and was screaming at officers to shoot them. Ranger Brewer was able to use his crisis intervention tools to take the driver into custody without further property damage, physical harm to the innocent, um, members of the community, as well as the suspect. Um, he was ultimately charged with over 18 crimes and issued a $50,000 cash bond, and Ranger Brewer received a supervisor's commendation for his work in this call. Another unique story that we can tell you is we had a trophy elk poached from Red Mountain in late November of 2024. In any other instance, the hunter involved in this case would have been charged with a Title 33 illegal trespass with an added charge for Samson's Law, um, since this elk was a trophy elk, so anything six points or higher is considered a trophy animal. Um, a Samson's Law charge carries an additional $10,000 fine, as well as the risk of a permanent revocation of your hunting privileges in Colorado. Unfortunately, current statute language right now precludes county and municipal agencies from being able to pursue these charges, and this loophole has been affecting agencies across the state for the last couple of years. Um, most agencies, uh, natural resource agencies across the state don't have very much support from their DA's office to pursue these kinds of cases. We were super lucky that we had a lot of support from our DA's office here, um, and so we knew that we had a duty to approach this case very carefully. Uh, it took a lot of twists and turns, um, we even had a little bit of an elk mix-up, but at the end of it, I am happy to share with everybody that we reached the following deal with the suspect of a guilty plea to one count of illegal possession of an elk, um, 15 points assessed on their hunting license, a $1,000 fine and a forfeiture of the elk. Um, we've talked a little bit about the Alexander Mountain and Stone Canyon fires. Uh, our Ranger cadre was deeply involved in that. In fact, Ranger Farrenbrook was the first unit on scene to that fire when it ignited on July 29th. Every member of our Ranger cadre responded to assist with the operations over the following 19 days, whether that was assisting in evacuating over 5,000 resident, residents, supplying man-hours for roadblocks to protect the security of the neighborhoods affected by the fire, or staffing the rescue boats to clear both Horse Tooth and Carter for the scooper plane If this presentation hasn't been testament enough, the Ranger Corps had a very busy year, um, and were recognized for their efforts at the annual Sheriff's Office Awards banquet. Um, the top left is a photo of Ranger Hannah Beam receiving an award for responding to a lightning strike, which ignited just nor- right above Carter Lake. Um, this was right in the middle of the initial response to the Alexander Mountain Fire, so every law enforcement first responder was, was actively working on evacuations. And so Ranger Beam with a couple other deputies responded to this tree on fire. Um, they began digging line and Ranger Beam went and grabbed her fire extinguisher from her vehicle and was able to extinguish the fire, um, on this tree, which allowed everybody to continue focusing on the Alexander Mountain Fire and kept this from becoming another big and, um, complicated addition to that situation. The top right are Rangers Beam and Farrenbrook, um, who are accepting an award for their part in the response to the Stone Canyon Fire. Um, if you're unfamiliar with it, it was a fire that ignited in Lyons, Colorado. Also, in the middle of the Alexander Mountain Fire, um, is a very quick burning fire and they went and did evacuations and were able to get some folks out who otherwise may not have been able to escape that fire. The bottom right is Rangers Knight and seasonal Ranger Molly Buck. They both received life-saving medals for responding, uh, to a man who had fallen several feet off of a cliff and suffered some life, stuff, life-threatening injuries. Uh, Ranger Knight and Ranger Buck hiked up a very rugged terrain to get to the patient and provide medical treatment and assisted in a tech, technical extrication of the patient to get them to definitive medical care. Um, the patient did make a full recovery. So as you can see, the carrying and keeping of our properties is truly a team effort. Um, while these slides only touch on some of the major events of the year, they really only allow us to give you a glimmer of the work that's completed by all the incredible staff of the Visitor Services Division, um, who show up every single day dedicated to giving recreators the best and safest experience that they can have. We thank you so much for your time and welcome any additional questions you might have.
Thank you. Aubrey, other questions? Commissioner Shadak McNally?
I just want to make sure we make special note of the picture. We didn't mention Captain Fleming's Special Accommodation Award and her recognition. So I know she probably told you that too, but I'll make sure she gets.
Yes.
Her, her big kudos for that and, and of course, I know you oversee all these wonderful folks and great work with the, with the maintenance that we all don't, it's great to know all the things, like even the kiosk, I didn't know you guys did that in-house. I mean, that's just amazing, amazing work. And I've seen the new ones, they're beautiful, just really informative, really eye-catching and really well-done and designed. And just thank you to all the Rangers, you know, I'm your, some of your biggest fans. And what you did during Alexander Mountain Fire and some other things you do is you're literally saving lives and, and really, um, maybe don't get all the credit you deserve, but I think you do amazing work and I just want to say how much I appreciate each, and one of you and the things you do to keep the public safe, but I think that is really huge, 1.1% cited. You guys work so hard to help educate people and get them to comply with the rules, I've seen it. And that's a s- amazing statistic, so, um, it just says that you're following the mission and trying to, you know, um, walk, um, and do that work instead of just talking about. So I would just want to commend you all and thank you for the work and thank you to Daylin and Megan and the whole team and everyone that oversees this and Leslie. What a great team. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kofalos?
Thanks. My questions have been proactively answered in the, uh, presentation that you just, uh, provided on the Rangers, so thank you for that. And just to echo what Commissioner Shadak McNally said, you do really great work, important work. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just echo this, the thanks that, um, there again, Aubrey, thank you for touching on all the different kinds of work that Rangers do. Clearly, there again, not a job where you're ever bored or ever doing the same thing on any given day. Um, but, um, really appreciate your service to the community. And Chris, thanks for your leadership and congratulations on the commendation. Daylin, great team. Uh, Leslie, ditto. Um, yeah, this is great work and I'm glad that the community can see this too, and I hope that, um, do we have this, you know, some of this online somewhere so that people can see the sort of breadth of work that you all do? It'd be nice to have that, um, I think, for people to, to understand because.
Because there are times when, when we hear about, not about you guys, no, but about sort of like, why can't you, you know, do more with the money you have? Right? And you do a lot with the money that you have. So I just want people to be aware of that, that, that you're working hard every single day, that you're protecting the community, that you're keeping people safe, allowing them to recreate. And so that's, it's huge. And thank you very much.
Miranda, anything to add?
Yeah, I've seen you all in action out in the field, both in maintenance issues and in interactions with customers who may not be behaving at their best. And it, the interactions are all really positive. It's, I know it's a last resort for you all, and that statistic was really striking. I, I knew it was going to be low. 1.1% is, is extremely low. The, the care you take in talking with customers who are, who are on your facilities is just outstanding. Please go back and share that with the team that it's seen. It's recognized and very much appreciated. I think it's what keeps those numbers coming up year after year.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think it's appropriate. This is Public Service Workers Week, so it's really great to highlight the work that, that one of our teams does. And so thank you for being here and thanks for, for the work you do. And it's getting warm outside, so. But I mean, not that you, you have work year-round, I get it. But I mean, the work becomes especially complicated as we move into warmer seasons. So thank you.
Thank you all for your attention. And just to answer your question, we have given this presentation twice to our, our boards, which are also available publicly, but.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next agenda item.
Great. Yeah, thank you. And thank you for your recognition of a great example of public service during Public Service Week, too. One of the many teams that does that within our county organization. Amy White is going to come up to give an update on a topic that you've heard about a bit before around co-compliance fines to the treasurer. So I'll hand it over to Amy. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner.
I just want to, I mean, this is a little off-topic, but since Amy's here, thank you all. Great job. I noticed the big news that was sad but excited for her, that Judy is retiring. And I know we have a very strong contract with that. And I'm just wondering, will anyone from the county be able to be a part of feedback on that search or in part of that at all, since we have such a strong contract with them and they're, they're important partners for us? I'm just curious.
And I'll just say that we're referring to Judy Calhoun retiring from No Co-Humane.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Amy White, co-compliance supervisor. And yes, I have been in contact with Judy. She's not quite sure what that transition hiring team is going to look like. But just through the years, our relationship with No Co-Humane has been a little bit more impactful. So we're hoping to have some representation in some way, shape, or form. So they're aware of it. Yeah. All right. So I am here just to remind you and give you all a little bit of context. This is a, a case we've been working on for several years. It's Jake's Farm down in Loveland. We have court-imposed fines on the property. And each quarter, we've been giving the court a status update, which includes the attorneys for the defendants. So they're well aware of what we're, of the actions that we're taking. So we did the first one from, on November 19th, 2024, and that amount was $30,800. The second one was done earlier this year, and it was $29,700. And now we're to do our third one, which is another $29,700. So there are just over $90,000 in fines. This will be presented tomorrow morning in, on your consent agenda, and these are collected as a special assessment by the county treasurer. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of context and let you know that it's still unresolved. The violations are still there, and we're taking whatever steps we can legally to try to get some resolution.
Questions? Commissioner Shattuck McNally?
I think we might have talked about this before. I mean, this is really in the court's hands. Right, we have, so we really, there's nothing in that, I'm doing this mostly for the public, but there's nothing that we can, it's in the court's hands to keep assessing this. And obviously, there has been three quarters and no changes.
That is correct. It's, it's in the court's hands now. We're obviously represented by the county attorneys and, again, trying to do everything we legally can to get, A, the resolu, the property, the violations resolved. And then the second piece is just a little bit of help for the amount of work that we're all putting into it. So. And the, the ability to impose fines is fairly recent, like in 2023 or 2024. I'm not, I can't remember. So it's fairly recent that we've been able to do this. This is the only case that we are doing it on currently. We've got some other cases filed where if they don't comply with the stipulation that they enter into and actually admit to the violations, there could be additional cases.
So Commissioners, you will see this tomorrow on your consent agenda.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Kofalas?
Thank you. Thanks, Amy. So the property owners are just in denial, or they're just ignoring?
I don't know if, if they're in denial or ignoring. We did meet on-site back in January. County Attorney Hough, co-compliance inspector, Mr. Brooks, and myself all met on property to actually say, here's what you need to do here, here's what you need to do here. And there was a little bit of progress, but I was just down there over the weekend, not there, but at Mountain View High School. And the violations are even worse than they may have been back in January.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thank you for, you know, I know that it does take time out of your, you and your staff's time to be able to do that. And I think that's some of the purpose of the fines, is to remedy the situation and make sure we're accounting for costs that we have associated with this. So.
Thank you. And yeah, just because it is a rather new ability that we- Sorry. Because it is a rather new ability that we have, I just want to make sure that everybody's understanding that it, it is a process. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your work on that. And thanks for updating us. And we'll see it on tomorrow's agenda. All right. Anything else, Leslie?
Thank you, Amy. Yes, I just have a couple of updates, mostly transportation-related, actually. One is that you'll start to see some information publicly on transportation funding. We have, as you're aware, working with a firm that's working with us to help the public understand some of the needs that we have from a funding perspective. We'll have also more information for you all and staff and others to share as you go out and have conversations in the community around this topic, too. So we'll have, have more coming, but you and the public and others may start to see some messaging out there around that topic. And it is, it is still a topic of need as we're learning through our recent transportation master plan that is wrapping up here shortly, and will start to make its way back to you and the Planning Commission for review, and then ultimately approval in June. So those two items are, are happening simultaneously. And then a good news item that Mark had shared with you last week. We're hearing from CDOT that they're making some progress on some of the US 287 improvements, namely the Owl Canyon intersection, where they're in the process of awarding a contract to do some work there, striping and, and whatnot. And I know that's something we heard a lot from the Livermore community in particular at some of the conversations. And that's part of the Safety Action Plan that the, that we've been working on in that CDOT, CDOT Safety Plan for US 287, too. So it's great to see some progress happening up in that area and to see one of the projects that was targeted as, as a priority moving forward. And then upcoming, we have, we will get back to having more regular Monday afternoon work sessions. Next week, we have information coming your way around Conservation Easement Amendment from Natural, Natural Resources Department again. And then you'll hear about the annual cost of living adjustments, fees for engineering, building, and planning, and updates for changes proposed for the July 1st change of fees. And then we have, May 14th, there is a work session with the Planning Commission. There's some code changes that Jenny Axsmacher will bring to that session. And Rebecca's back, so we're excited. And so we'll have, we don't have a land use hearing today, but we'll see her more regularly going forward on these afternoon sessions and other, and other work sessions. So that's another piece of great news. And that is it from me.
Wonderful. Any questions for Leslie?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pretty good news item, so we'll, we'll take it. And with, and no other business, so at 2:18, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.